July 5th Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting, I ask you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. No minutes to accept, first item on the agenda, Pine Ridge Extension Requests for Preliminary Approval of a Six-Lot Subdivision Located Off Scudder Monk Road in Highland Mills, Known as the Village and Known on the Tax Maps as Section 213, Block 1, Lots 4 and 5. Want to give you a little summary?
I do want to give a little summary. So, the Board knows that this application has been continued for many years because it was held up in court with litigation. That court action has been resolved and they have hired an engineer. Mike Morganti, you've seen him here on other applications. He reached out to me to ask if they needed to get this extension or if he could just wait and make a submission. That was about a month ago and I said, "No, you need to submit a request." He submitted this request. He will not be here this evening. However, what I told him is the same that I will tell you is they are going to be making a submission shortly in the next couple of months. So I would only advise giving a six-month extension rather than a full year, which is what you've done in the past to get a court update. And that would bring it to your January 3rd, 2024 meeting.
Okay, anybody got questions for Kelly?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, I'll offer a motion to offer a six-month extension for Pine Ridge to January 3rd of 2024. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Stein-Vandebill ARB Public Hearing for ARB and Ridge Preservation of Proposed Renovations in addition to include conversation of conversion, not conversation, we're converting, of garage-to-living space deck and pool enclosure. Said property is located at 21 Vanderbilt Drive in Highland Mills, known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 245, Block 1, Lot 102. Anybody here representing Stein tonight? Okay. We have a report, but our customary practice is we don't typically proceed without the applicant here. I guess we go to the public hearing, right Kelly?
It is a public hearing, if there are members from the public who would like to speak, but you may want to delay this in case they show up and got stuck in a little traffic and maybe go on to the next one and then...
Okay, I see Light Brights is here. Yes, okay. Alright, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, we'll come back. Light Bright Signs Kohl's in Sephora Review Revised Documents for ARB Review of Proposed Illuminated Cabinet Sign to Storefront as well as Placement of Sign Panels on Existing Monument Signs. Said property is located at 23 Center Drive and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 225, Block 2, Lots 1 dot 12. Good evening.
Hi. I'm back because we had to revise the renderings to include a second pylon and a new frontage.
Okay. And we did get those drawings?
Yes.
Alright, we do have a brief memo, but Natalie is not joining us tonight, but we have our much capable Assistant Jim with us this evening?
Yeah, and we had reviewed all the materials and we believe we can just work with the applicant during the site plan signing, just to make a minor revision, just clarifying the actual wall area.
Yeah, there were very few things that actually had to be corrected. Did everybody have a chance to review the signs?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Anybody have a problem or comments, concerns? Okay.
Nope.
Alright, well, we do happen to have two draft resolutions of approvals. We're gonna use the one with the June 29th, there was a penmanship there on the June 26th one.
Sorry.
It's cool, it happens.
There's another one.
Yeah, 29th, June 29th? Yep, that one. Alright, so, after several pages of facts and findings, the existing pylon signs exceeds the restrictions on the number of colors permitted in connection with the multi-tenant directory sign, three colors, which is a legally pre-existing non-conforming condition. No variances from the zoning board or appeals are necessary. This application exempt from the current moratorium as the project involves an application for Planning Board and/or Architecture Review Board, approved for signs in accordance with Village Code 310-30 and permits in connection therewithin, exemption number 6. And here we get to the specific conditions. All conditions of prior approval in connection with this property shall continue to be in full force and effect and this resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approvals and conditions except as specifically set forth in this resolution. No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviation from such renderings will require further planning board review. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated June 2nd, 2023 to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Signs shall only be illuminated during operating hours. I will offer a motion to...
Wait, wait.
No!
Sorry. Number 3, the memo is actually July 3rd. Natalie submitted an updated memo. And then on page 2, it just recognizes this to be a Type 2 action.
You actually want me to recognize?
No, she was just noting that so that approval is based on that.
Alright, I'll offer a motion to accept the amended draft resolution of approval.
I will second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to ask you, so I submitted to the Building Department and was denied and then referred here. Do I have to resubmit, do you know, or should I just ask Maria?
I think resubmit, right?
It would be resubmitted, but what you've submitted, Natalie or Jim will be working with you to make any modifications based on this Board's approval. She'll issue a sign-off letter, I'll issue a sign-off letter, we'll get those plans signed by the Chairman and then it's...
To the Building Department.
Then you resubmit to the Building Department for the building permit.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you doing both, are you doing both applications tonight, Vanderbilt and Blueberry? Okay, let's go back to Stein-Vandebill ARB Public Hearing for ARB and Ridge Preservation of Proposed Renovations in addition to include conversion of garage-to-living space deck and pool enclosure. Said property is located 21 Vanderbilt Drive in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 245, Block 1, Lot 102. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening, my name is Yitzhak Stein and I'm sending my client to 21 Vanderbilt. They're looking to do a pool enclosure, enclosing the existing pool and some renovations, including incorporating the existing garage to the usable living space and some other interior renovations. And we need to discuss the deck. I've seen that there is some research made and want to hear.
We'll go over all that while we...
Pardon?
We'll go over what came up when they looked over the decks and stuff like that. I know they found a few things with that, so when we go to Jim, we'll go through that. And I know we got a bunch of stuff from you today on, or one of your colleagues today on Vanderbilt, but the Board hasn't had a chance to review that. I think we got a rendering and some updated pictures. No?
I'm not aware of any submission, but I...
Maybe I don't know how to read my email. Maybe a mistake.
We got the letter today.
Maybe it was the letter we got today and I got confused with. Okay, that's fine. Alright, we'll go to Jim?
They went to Natalie and Natalie forwarded them on, they were from, I'm gonna butcher this name, but Shlomi Rissler.
That's good, oh, very good. Yeah, so basically, as per the last conversation we had with the last meeting, I was going to submit to Natalie the updated stuff.
Okay.
So probably she just sent it in, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, it looks like it got sent to Natalie or gets on the July 3rd, so yeah, we just, that's...
Alright.
Alright, so you sent it, Shlomi sent it to 27.
Natalie forwarded it on the 3rd.
Okay, okay. I know I'm not going absolutely crazy, I know I thought I saw something on this today.
Let's clarify.
Alright, Jim, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, we were just going to go over mostly mainly the ZBA referral and some bulk issues that we reviewed and had some exceptions with. Originally, the original approval had a deck of 244 square feet, was approved in 1996. This new current proposal has a deck that's 452 square feet, so it's a delta increase of 210 square feet in the rear of the home as well as a 331 square foot enclosed deck in the front of the home. There's also an existing 70-square-foot covered porch that was not approved. So we, based on these conditions, it exceeds the maximum permitted coverage. The increase in coverage due to the covered porch in the front and the large deck at the rear requires a variance for the ZBA. There's also a side yard nonconformity. One of the side yards is 28.6 feet and it should be a 30-foot required. And the bulk table doesn't reflect that, it should be updated as well.
Questions for Jim?
Now, with the side yard, it's existing, so it really just got to be updated, correct?
Right, it should be just reflected on the table. I'm sorry?
In terms of impervious surface, that's something that's gonna have to go into their calculation, but as far as construction that doesn't require a permit from this Board and doesn't require a permit from the Building Department, I did speak to Mike about that.
But there was a concern that part of the sidewalk was on a different property.
If it's on a different property, that becomes a private matter between the two property owners.
Good, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question, but before I say, I live in Highland Estates and I feel like I'm impartial in reviewing this application and making a determination like they have in the previous. My questions are for the engineer related to the July 3rd memo that you sent us. I hope it's not a prima joke, because he said other information was sent, I didn't receive it. So, I'm asking a question and the information as that you sent, you know, let me know. Other questions to ask. In the Section 1, called General, on page 1 of Natalie's, she wrote, "The applicant proposes to demolition and rebuild the rear deck, although it exists, it was not previously approved." And then she continues, "Likewise, the applicant proposes on his application dated 3/23 to redo both the front deck and the rear deck and rebuild it per his plan," when they quote Phase 2 in the application. The question is, just for clarification, are we reviewing and approving this based on the as-built? That it's already built because I don't know the measurements of the as-built? Or are we building it on the size and on the plan that we received?
You would be reviewing it based on what the Building Department has? Anything that is not shown on the Building Department files, whether it's been constructed or not, this Board is looking at as if it doesn't exist then is proposed?
Okay. And then, my second question is on page 2, the engineer's report, same date, under zoning, use, accessory buildings are permitted by code, structure should be limited, no greater than 1,500 feet. The pool house is inconsistent among material submitted. I'm not sure, I was gonna ask you to expand upon that.
Yeah.
I remember at the previous meeting, we had some questions about what is the exact dimension of the pool? Because I don't believe that was in there. The existing dimension of the concrete pad on the side of the pool that's already there? And then the proposed dimensions of the new accessory structure, even though it says 1,500, you know, what is the actual size? And then, I think we asked at the last meeting, since we were unsure, if there was an overlay and you dropped that 1,500-foot new structure, would it land on the existing concrete pad or is it gonna land on the new stamped concrete bed? I remember that question, so I had that in my notes about the overlay. We had an overlay where it would fall, on the stamp, on the new stamped concrete or on the existing? And then, my last question on the bulk coverage. Existing coverage as listed in the bulk table requires clarification. In reviewing our building code, coverage and percentage of wall area covered by the building area and all impervious surfaces, I'm concerned about the rain runoff and the table saves in the building, like 20%? So my question for Natalie or the engineer is, when you do that calculation, I know you include all the existing, like driveway, the building, pool area with the concrete, but now you have a sidewalk that was never there. That's kind of considered, right, it's impervious?
Yeah, all the impervious areas, yes.
And then, we don't know the size of the stamped concrete that's new going all around the pool? And then, the other question that came up, I don't, if you gave an answer, I apologize, I don't remember. But when you gave us these, you don't have any? Remember these drawings? I don't see anything in the proposal this year. All this over here? This new stamped concrete and it looks like you're moving the door. Is that going to be in the plan or is that just...
On the updated, no, this is an old version of the renderings. We made a new one. For some reason, the guy who did the renderings understood we're going to do a big path over there, but it's not, we updated that and it's still green, only with a 3x3 concrete step out.
You're gonna send us...
Yeah, we did send it already, but we can send it again, no problem, I mean...
Okay, so that was it? I wouldn't see the calculation, when I see the drawings here.
Yeah, I think that's something that is gonna have to be updated and definitely when it goes to the ZBA, the ZBA will be looking for that same information of not just the roofs, but the, you know, any impervious surface, the area around the pool, the sidewalk, the driveway, things like that. There it is. That's what just came in, see, you're not crazy.
That was, I think, given before the last meeting, I think. As long as you may have it for the calculation and they don't include it.
Okay, thank you.
So, based on the, I see that the main issue over here are the decks. The decks that are somehow there and there's no approval for it on record. Question is, if the applicant is, if the owner is willing to remove those, you know, unlawful building of the decks, is that something that can be in a condition under approval for the other part of the submission?
Well, you're removing the existing rear deck already, right?
No, it's new. It's new.
Well, I thought, so you're not rebuilding, you're not removing and rebuilding?
No, so there is existently a deck over there of more than, I don't have the numbers offhand, but it's like 400 or something square feet? And it's only permitted 244?
It occurs 2452 square feet.
There's, so somehow they extended the deck? Question is if we can have them remove it as a condition of approving the other part of the submission?
But I think the decks are already there and to me, they're beautiful, I have pictures. Why would you want?
Yeah, it is, but the problem is that they don't want to be upheld for their pool enclosure since they wanted ASAP on because they want to use the pool during the summer season. And so they would want to consider some option like this. And maybe if they have, if they want to keep it, they can file a new submission and then we'll go to the zoning board for that and we'll get it done, I mean, just asking.
Hey Kelly, we've, I know we've dealt with encroachment issues before as part of conditions. To me, it's almost kind of in the same realm, it's an overage on coverage. Only way I can see it could potentially work is that if the plan does get approved, that a condition would be that prior to the issuance of any sort of a permit, that the deck and its foundation would have to be removed to the satisfaction of the building inspector before any permits are issued.
Correct. So, it could be handled as a condition, as Mr. Stein has suggested. However, what, the way it would be worded is because this Board, as you know, is not allowed to approve anything that is in violation of the code. So, the overage in impervious surface coverage would be in violation of the code, so you could basically condition it on prior to the issuance of a building permit for the pool enclosure, that those be removed, as you said, so that there isn't that overlap of overage and coverage. Wow, that's a lot of edges.
Yeah.
But, exactly. You could do that if you wanted to handle it in that fashion.
Something for the Board to think about.
I mean, is there any other way around it?
Well, the only other way around it is they have to go get a variance. It's either take it out or go get a variance, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry.
Me personally, I would go for a variance, but that's up to the applicant.
You do, I mean, and don't think it's gonna be like an end game, right? Once it gets, the Building Department will know the deck was there and was taken out. If they want to put the deck back, you're still gonna have to go get a variance to put the deck back if that's what your client ends up wanting to do.
Yeah, of course, of course.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, you'd still need a variance for the deck.
Right. I would let him decide, I just brought up the option.
Yeah.
And I'll, if it's an option, I'll definitely go back and have him decide how he wants to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, it's an option the Board could potentially consider.
Yep.
And we're not doing an approval tonight, but...
One more question I have. When we're talking about the decks are not previously approved, are we talking about the portion of the deck by the entry, by the actual entry? Because that's like part of the structure of the house. I don't, I can't think that it shouldn't be approved prior to, you know, when they build a house.
So, from what we found and what Natalie found based on, if you remember at the last meeting, you asked us to do some research with the Building Department. The Building Department provided us with information. In the rear of the house, there's an existing 244-square-foot deck that was approved as part of the house. What they're proposing now is the 452 square feet in the rear and a 331-square-foot deck in the front. Those are both new and the 70-square-foot covered porch is new. So if that is, none of that was approved.
So the 70-square-feet covered porch, I can't just tell him to take it away because how is he going to go into his house?
I don't disagree, I just don't know how the impervious surface coverage works out. If that was part of this Board's approval, how does the percentage work out? What else can be taken away to make that balance? I just don't know.
Yeah, I don't know how you would do that. And unfortunately, what happens in instances is when people come and they go to try to do things the right way and they do the research, you find out things in the past have not been done the right way and you now get, or your client now gets caught holding the bag for work that was done illegally, pretty much.
Yeah, but I don't know how this got a CFO without having an option to go into the house. So I assume that it was built prior to getting the CFO. It's like four, five steps up and a porch, there's no other way to go in.
And I understand your point of view as well. If you have, if your client or maybe has some sort of original plans or something to the house that said it was originally approved, then it's something that we could look at, but the Building Department here has no record of it.
And you'd be surprised what people do? You'd be surprised?
That's the, what, Kelly?
I said, you'd be surprised what happens with what people do.
Yeah, I know.
So at this point, if we want to go with the route that we're going to remove the decks prior to construction of the pool house, that means that he needs to take off his front entry? This is...
Not necessarily. It really comes down to what the impervious surface coverage percentage is and if you're able to have, if it falls within the permitted impervious surface coverage with the pool enclosure and with that 70 square feet, then that 70 square feet would be something that this Board would be considering as part of the approval.
Or, or even if it's not, even if it's not including the lot, if it's more than the lot coverage, we can just take off the coverage so it falls into the code that says that any porch less than 75 square feet can be in the setbacks.
Pretty much at this point, you would have to cut enough coverage or impervious coverage out to get you under the magic threshold. So whether that's the 400 square feet in the front or 70 or 25 square feet in the back, you would have to figure out how you're gonna come up to get under the variance threshold. Does that make any sense?
It makes sense what you're saying, but I don't think it's possible because it's like way more than the coverage.
I know.
Existing. I'm not talking about the proposed decks.
No, I know what you're talking, it's already there. And again, we don't know how it ever got to CFO. So unfortunately, we can't go back in time and figure that out. So we can only work with the information that you've provided us and the Building Department has on record. And that's what we're tied to use. So like I said, if you, maybe he's got something in the basement that somehow this is magically on there and would help you out, but...
It's what?
He's got some plans or something in the basement that show this was all approved and there's, you know, the former building inspector's signatures on it and signed off on it then we potentially have a different story, but right now, we don't have any of that.
If you could find out who the builder is, that put those decks on, you might be able to find plans to that builder.
They still need to be signed, even if it's a set of plans, we still need to have something signed from the building inspector at the time.
Don't they usually sign?
Usually, but...
So that's one possibility, not saying it's possible for this, well, it's possible but not definite.
It really depends how much effort and time your client wants to put into this, right? The quick fix is...
Engineers can be creative, you know? Architects can be creative, there you go.
The quick fix is remove the, get your encourage coverage down to under the allowed threshold or go seek the variance.
Or get a variance.
Or get a variance.
Or maybe there is another option of doing a new submission only for the pool house?
No, because what's gonna happen is, is you're gonna get, when the building inspector goes out and he looks at the plans that are approved by this Board, you're gonna get violated on everything that's not either on file with him or this Board approved. And then you're gonna be back in the same boat, you're gonna have to go seek a variance and relief from them or take it out.
Got it.
Alright.
That's the best, that's probably just try to get the variance.
But again, it's up, which way your client wants.
I'll go back to the client and see how he wants to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, that's the best advice really right now. Alright. Any other questions to the applicant or before I open the public hearing? Yep, go ahead.
Just administrative, on the application, it says property owner Eli Kaufman, but on the Orange County deed and the public record here, it says Vanderbilt 21 Realty. So is he the majority owner or are there others?
Attention?
It says, yeah.
Oh, that, well, okay, we'll just have him update the form, I mean... The application form? Yeah, it has, so when they send out the mailings for the public record, they take it off by whatever in the county's system. So the county's system has a different name than what's on the application. So the county has an LLC and then the application has a name on it.
And the county's about six weeks behind or even more on that system. So it may be that it was transferred, but you just need those updated.
Just need, whatever the property is legally in is what needs to be reflected on the documents.
Are we doing the public comment today?
Yeah, we're gonna get there next. We're just walking through everything else first. Okay. Alright, so...
I have one question.
Go ahead.
I just see on the site plan, with the bulk requirements, I do see something about the side yard. It's...
The encroachment on the side, the fence that encroaches?
No, are you talking about the 30-foot required and...
Yeah.
Yeah, you have 28.6?
It doesn't show the numbers, maybe, yeah, he has it wrong, okay. Yeah, okay, I'll have him update it.
You could update that one.
Alright, so we're gonna go to the public hearing before I open the public hearing. Of course, this was published in the Time Hells Records on June 30th, 2023. I am going to make one brief comment that before we state, we did receive a letter from a resident in the community. While this is an HOA, this development has an HOA on top of it, this Board has no say in what the HOA requirements are. This Board is only reviewing... This board is only reviewing the zoning as pertaining to the overlay zoning district, and that's the only thing we can, we can talk about. If the HOA said they're not allowed to have pink houses, and that we approve a pink house that's within this board's purview, that doesn't matter for the HOA to take up with the property owner.
Fair enough.
So, with that said, go to the first row of public comments, on Twenty-One Vanderbilt. How about anybody in the room for Twenty-One Vanderbilt?
I was waiting till you got to rows three and four, where there's nobody sitting in.
Hello, Mr. Garber. Chris Graziano. I live in Development. I'm not here to opine on the project itself, because this, you know, I completely recuse myself out of this, as it could come in front of our board eventually, for something. I'm also here to strongly suggest, especially after your last statement, that Mr. Cattagio recused himself as well, because as a member of the HOA board, that could conflict with his opinion on this board, as in regard to what the rules are for an HOA versus the rules are for a planning board, and I strongly suggest he recuses himself from this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? So, I don't know if we should close the public hearing, because you, the plans may change, based on what your applicant wants to do. When do you think you hear back from him? How long do you think he's gonna take to make up his mind on what he wants to do?
I thought you were asking, did you just text him? Did he get back to you?
Yeah. No, so I think it would be prudent to continue the public hearing to the next.
I think it would make sense, and then if it needs to be continued after that, but at least it gives the applicant some time to think about what they wanna do, and if he can come up with a different way to do it that way. And after that, you can either close the public hearing and move forward, or you can refer to the ZBA.
All right, so I'm gonna make.
Can we keep a public hearing open?
We can keep it open as long as.
We can just keep open?
We keep extending. I mean, eventually you get to the point where their lawyers may say like, we're just stalling the project, but at this point, there's a legitimate reason, because the plans may change based on what the applicant does with the impervious coverage.
Yep, I was curious.
Did you wanna bring that to the nineteenth, or the second, just thinking on if they did change the plan, when is that submission deadline?
I think we should go to the August, this way they, you would have time, if your client decides to change the plans, you can get the submission in, and we can have it all done that night. All right, so that is, the second, right, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to extend the public hearing to August second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you're good with Twenty-One Vanderbilt, what needs to be done there, right? And you got a couple of comments in the engineer's letter that needs to be addressed. So with your next submission, hopefully just get that all. Yeah, so we can just kind of move forward and go from there. All right. I just don't mind. There it is. We did light brights. All right, Stein Ideal Design ARB twenty Blueberry, review and discuss revised documents submitted for the reconstruction of a single family dwelling within existing footprint. Said properties located at twenty Blueberry Lane in Highland Mills, is known as the Village Woodbury Tax Maps, section two one seven, block two, lot three. Long time no see.
Hi, my name is Yitzhak Stein from Ideal Design, came to represent my customer at twenty Blueberry. So my customer wants to, has his old house, which is a noncon, pre-existing non-conforming property, and he wants to basically get it, tear it down, since it's old and it makes a lot of problems, and build the same footprint, and get his same non-conforming without extending the non-conforming.
Building on the existing foundation?
Yes, existing footprint, but it's gonna be.
He would wanna keep the existing foundation, but it's not worth it, I mean.
But it's gonna be two stories, if I remember correctly.
So it's on top of a full basement, yes.
Questions for the applicant first? No? Jim?
Yes, so Natalie wrote a memo up, dated the third, where she points out some of the bulk table issues. First of all, there was no bulk table on a lot plan, that's the first part. Both side yards, seventeen point six feet, sixteen point eight feet, or less than the minimum thirty, and that require variance. There is, when the demolition of the, of the existing building occurs, all non-conforming existing accessory structures will no longer be allowed. So there's a number of sheds, there's at least one shed on the side yard that require a variance. There's one sheds, three point six feet from the property line, that require variance. The scale appears to indicate the entrance porch and steps are greater than the seventy square feet permitted by code. Have to confirm that that complies, foresee relief. The gross floor area of the home should be provided. Dimensions of the unfinished basement and the table or floor areas should also be added to the, to the plan. Natalie noted that it was unclear whether you proposed to remove all the trees on this project during the construction. And we also noted that there are encroachments.
What was the last one?
Encroachments.
Right, there's four sheds here.
More than the side yard, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, you wait, but if you're removing the existing foundation, you have to go for variances for that, correct?
No, they don't need a variance for these.
That's what he's saying.
Is he?
Demolished, including existing foundations, then it's required.
Right.
Yeah, if you, if you demolish a dwelling and you're removing the foundation.
That's why I asked.
Then the, they lose the pre-existing, any pre-existing non-conforming status. You've seen that on a couple of your applications, others who maintain that foundation are able to keep some form of that status.
Right, that's it, it's the footprint and the foundation has to stay.
They gotta go for a lot of variances here.
Well, the sheds are easy to fix, the shed you can just take off the property.
Yeah, exactly, so I was going to say that the sheds, I can fix everything.
Can't fix using the old foundation, though, right?
Exactly, so the only thing that we have over here is the foundation that we're removing. The only option, I guess, that the owner has, keeping the old foundation, and this will help him without going for zoning variance.
It would help with a degree of the variance that may, may potentially be needed.
In any case, variance is needed.
Yes.
It will help him get the variance.
It would be a lesser degree of a variance that you would need if you don't, if you can keep the existing, reuse the existing foundation.
Is there, so, so is there an option, is there any sort of an option to redesign the plan or whatever? We should not be needed to go to the zoning board? Or anything we wanna do with this property, since it's pre-existing non-conforming, we need to go to the ZBA?
Off the top of my head, I don't think of any, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that would allow you to keep the existing property. That's the whole idea behind pre, getting rid of nonconform, having the non-conforming is eventually weeds out the structures that don't conform to the current codes, so they would be brought up or the current standards. So that's why they don't, there's really no workaround for that.
Right, but I can, I can, we can do a house in the existing, in the new setbacks needed. The only problem is that the entire property is less than the property size needed in the current code. So we need two, I think it's two A, we need two acres, and it's only much less than that. So saying that, that means that there is no way out of going to zoning board?
Yeah, pretty much. Unless they did like just external renovations, right, and the existing house stayed?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna give an exact, specific answer, only because there's so many variables, but if they basically raised the existing house, kept the same foundation, kept the same size, went up almost exactly the same, they'd have a, likely would not need any variances, just because the lot is undersized. If the lot is undersized, and the building inspector makes a finding that it is legally pre-existing non-conforming as to lot area, and that was the only one, just using that as an example, that is something that you could recognize in a resolution of this board. However, if there's, it's really hard for people to just stay with what is existing, to tear down and rebuild the same thing, it's very difficult to do.
You'd pretty much be putting backwards, you would have to put back exactly what is there, like down to the millimeter. Because any, anything outside of that would then require variance.
But they can come up with a nice, different colored design, so there's possibilities, just need to brainstorm on it. It's an option.
I guess you can, again, you gotta talk to your client, see what they wanna do, right?
Exactly.
From a practical viewpoint, what condition is the foundation in, if you wanted to preserve it? It's not part of our concern, be part of your, the safety of your house.
No, I mean, the building inspector would have to make sure it's okay before.
Right, so I'm just saying.
We'll need to have an architect or engineer to have to review it, of course, yes.
It's just something to be aware of before you invest a lot of time.
Could we, Kelly, I mean, I guess what we could do, if you're, if the client wants to keep the current design, we could do the authorization to go to the ZBA.
Yeah, so that it wouldn't slow them down.
We wouldn't, so they wouldn't have to come back.
Right.
Okay, so how about, we can do that, we'll make, I'll make the motion to authorize referral to the ZBA for the current plan.
So that's no basement, no anything, just these?
It's, no, no, it's what he submitted to us.
Okay.
That if his client says, I wanna go and.
And get the variance.
And get the variances. He doesn't have to come back to us and say, I spoke to my client, I wanna get the variance. And then he's still gotta come back to us anyway to do ARB and everything else, anyway. But this is just so you can get his variance.
Let him go over there.
So.
We can still change their mind afterwards, but if we wanna proceed with this, we can, we can.
At least start over at the ZBA, see if you get your variance, or what degree of variance the ZBA will give you, because the ZBA could also turn around and tell you they're not gonna give you the full variance you're looking for. You know, so they could say, you've gotta take ten, I'm just throwing it out, I don't know, I have any idea what they're gonna do. They could leave it as it is, or tell you, you gotta cut twenty percent off it, and you'd have to scale your plan back anyway. So it makes no sense for this board to go any further, because we have no idea what the other board is going to do. I'm just trying to save you to come, coming back to us and say, my client said, hey, I wanna try my luck and see what happens. Okay. So I'll offer a motion to authorize Natalie to draft a referral to the ZBA.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we'll hear back from you on both of them then. Okay. All right, the last item on the agenda, two twenty-eight Route thirty-two has requested to be postponed until the August meeting. They received that letter from the engineer, and they need to do some calculations to see if their planting beds are big enough to handle the runoff.
Beds, not planters.
Yes, planting beds have to be big enough. So, I see anything, it's got anything else?
Heck no.
Motion closed. Pick one, all in favor?
Aye.